Ready, let's get started. Can we reconvene our committee meeting? Could I get a motion from the committee to open the second? All is in favor? I'd just like to identify when we get started that the public notice for this has been in the newspaper, the town's website, and on cable access. Please set your cell phones to stun. And if you could hold all your comments or questions until later, we'll explain the public hearing process. First, I'd like to introduce the Bylaw Review Committee: Steve Anderson on the end, Paula Melikin, Mark McRillis, Ken Charlton, Kamala Cassillo, and our very own Joe Hamel. Should we get started, I'm going to open the floor to the Auburn Town Manager Julie Jacobson. She's going to give you a little bit of a global overview of the process that we've been through and where we're going to.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening. I'm going to be very brief because we're going to turn this over primarily to the chair and let him run through a PowerPoint presentation. But before we do, I just want to give a brief overview of why we're here and what got us here. Thank you. First of all, it was about, I believe, August of 2011 that we appointed the Bylaw Review Committee, and we've had a couple of new members since, but we've had a couple of members who have been here since the beginning, too. So we thank all of you for your longstanding commitment and hard work on this. So it has been a little bit over three years to get us to this point. A large part of this was through the department heads, having to review every single bylaw that related to their department or to any activity or function in their department, and not only to review it, but then to come back with recommendations on whether those bylaws should be removed, eliminated completely, or revised, or if they should stay the same. So we had a lot of options when we were doing this. Of course, I just want to make it clear, this is a recommendation in a draft form. The process for this is through the committee, we're going to have two public hearings. So we have this one this evening, January 29th. We have another one on Monday evening where we will repeat everything for those who couldn't make it this evening, and it's also being televised. So if anyone can't get to the auditorium here on Monday, you're welcome to submit your comments in writing. We have set up a special website, excuse me, an email account that you can access on our website, and you can send comments directly through that account, and the chair of the committee will get them, share them with the committee members, and share them with Attorney Robert Henigan, who's also here this evening with us. Couple people I want to mention have worked very hard on this. In addition to the committee, all the department heads have really put a lot of time into this, as well as some of the division heads and employees within those departments. Also, our town council attorney, Bob Henigan, has done yeoman's work on this, as has Charlie Baker, our moderator. So the process from here is, we will have one more public hearing. We'll take any of the comments and suggestions under advisement. The committee will look at them. The department heads will look at them. If it makes sense to make those types of changes, we'll run them by town council. We'll make sure that it's legally appropriate to do so. We'll make any final revisions, and then we'll get a document out to the Board of Selectmen and to the Finance Committee, which we are looking to schedule a joint meeting, probably about the third week in February. So the plan would be that on February 23rd, which is the Board of Selectmen meeting, the Board of Selectmen would vote for a special town meeting on March 24th. They would open the warrant. We would open for a week and close the warrant. At that time during that week, this draft document will become a warrant article. The special town meeting will be on March 24th, at which point we will have had, again, these two public hearings, a joint hearing of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee incorporated all of the recommendations and bring it to town meeting for final vote. Once the document is voted on by town meeting on March 24th, the document would go in full to the Attorney General's Office in Boston, where it would undergo review as well. So I think that's basically the process, and I'll turn it over to Mark. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I should have a PowerPoint presentation for you from the committee. First of all, we'd like to thank the following people, and you can see there's a lot of people who've had their hands in this project: the town manager, chief financial officer, town clerk, town planner, several Board of Select members, police chief, fire chief, DPW director, Department of Development Inspection Services acting director, the town moderator, Finance Committee, town council, participating department staff members, of which there were many, and the IT Department of the Town of Auburn has done a great job for us. And the Bylaw Committee, I'd like to thank you for attending this evening. This is the date for the next hearing, and the snow date is on February 3rd, if you'd like to write that down. As the town manager said, that was our first Bylaw Committee meeting in 2011, and this is the 13th public meeting that we've held. Only the general bylaws were acted on, no zoning bylaws were touched. These were some of the issues that we faced when we looked at the original bylaws that we're operating under now. They're disorganized, they don't follow the town charter, did not correspond with the reorganization or restructuring of departments and positions within municipal government. Sections were obsolete and outdated, and the bylaw PDF was cumbersome and not easily cross-referenced. Zoning bylaws are a continuation or an attachment of those general bylaws and create an even larger document and confusing index. That index is in alphabetical order, and I think we've improved it significantly with this process. In the current bylaws, there are eight separate references to dogs. They're all over the place. Some are enforcement, some are issues related to dogs, some of them are setting fines and fees, for instance. But that's an example of why it's confusing. The enforcement authority for violations were ambiguous. Fees and fines lack consistency, were missing or outdated. References to reorganized positions that don't exist were in the bylaws, and that's all changed. The general bylaw titled Stormwater was actually contained in the zoning bylaws, so we pulled that out and moved it forward and back into the general bylaws. Probably one of the most important sections of the bylaws is licensing. Those sections were outdated and in need of revision. But the good news is, mostly, many of the bylaws that we looked at were actually functional, and that we could take them and move them forward, make revisions to them but keep them, and try to keep some of the historical perspective of that document. So we divided the bylaws, the general bylaws, into two distinct headings: administration and departments and divisions. This is what the administration side of the bylaws now looks like, and basically is administrative, operational, functional part of running the Town of Auburn. Departments and divisions, just what it says. You can see the new municipal reorganization, Department of Development Inspection Service, DPW, stormwater management's placed in the section there to be handled by the DPW, police and fire. One of the bylaws that we ran across was news racks. It was three pages long, and it kind of represented the change in society. There's no more, there's very little printed news anymore, everything people get online. But at one time, it was really a problem, but it actually took up three pages of our bylaws, so we actually deleted that because there's no need for it anymore. So we came up with a concept called the Fee Schedule and the Fine Schedule. And the technical difficulties of updating fees or fines for violations was very cumbersome, was very difficult to go to town meeting and have them update all the fees and fines that were in there. There were other, more important things for town meeting to deal with than that. So this concept is, we're going to have, give that ability to the Board of Selectmen. They're going to be able to review the fees and fine schedules on a yearly basis or as needed, and they can make amendments and changes outside of the bylaw process so that this will be less cumbersome and managed the way it should be. So no longer will a town meeting vote be required for setting or amending fees and fines that are intentionally omitted from the bylaw document. At the same time we were doing this project, the Board of Selectmen Subcommittee wrote and adopted licensing policies for public garages, secondhand pawnbroker, non-garages, unregistered motor vehicles, amusement parks, taxis, carry and alcohol, formerly known as juice bars, transient vendors, and amusement devices. However, the fees, the fines are not set for that yet, and that will become a part of the fee schedule. So because they adopted those policies, we deleted them from the, we're able to delete them from the bylaws, and we left a legacy reference in the bylaws so that anybody go to the bylaws to look at these licensing issues, they're directed to the Board of Selectmen as the licensing authority. Bylaw Committee through the town administration gave all of the department heads and their staff all their respective sections and had them work on it. They're the experts in their area. The committee took all of those, all that returned material, and upon completion, offered it to town council. We met with him at the town hall with department heads, staff members, and other participants for review as frequent due draft iterations were created. His office review of the document included format, indexing, table of content, consistent language, gender-specific language, and legal content. Meetings were then held with each respective department head and other contributors to review the most updated material. Several meetings were held with the town moderator, who assisted the committee to ensure consistent grammatical structure and punctuation. On January 5th, the members of the Bylaw Review Committee met and approved the draft proposal that we're dealing with tonight. That iteration was December 15th, 2014. And as soon as these hearings, these two hearings are complete, everyone's going to have an opportunity to review and finalize their sections, depending on your comments So we feel that these proposed bylaws are consistent with Auburn's town charter and municipal reorganization plan. The bylaws regulate certain financial operations of the town, and they're updated. These bylaws, using the committee's recommended design, are organized both administratively and operationally. The fees and fine schedules are being created right now by the committee. The department heads and staff brought their expertise to their respective sections, and this design allows future town meeting to easily make amendments as operating procedures, environmental, social, technological, and legal conditions change. This is the date for the anticipated special town meeting. And again, the IT department's assisting us with the, putting it into the format, hyperlinked format, so that it can go into the town's website. So at the conclusion of this presentation, we're going to place a copy of that current draft bylaw on the projector. It's a reasonable facsimile of what we anticipate the final bylaws to look like. However, this version may contain errors as the IT department developed this for your review and evaluation tonight. Because this page is cut and pasted from Microsoft Word and is unsecured, this iteration of the presentation will be removed from service at the completion of these hearings. It will be rebuilt again upon the final implementation of these bylaws. So the controlling document for this process is that version, and only that version, from December 15th, 2014. Amanda, could you bring that website up, please? We'll now hear from individual department heads relative to their sections. They've been allotted five minutes to brief you. At the completion of each section, we'll open the floor to questions for about 10 minutes. If a comment or question segment goes over 10 minutes, we'll place that section on hold, time allowing, we can return to it at the end of the hearing to ensure everyone has an opportunity to offer his or her presentation and public comment. During the public comment and question portion, if you have a question, please raise your hand so I can recognize you. When you're recognized, come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, and save any questions you might have for the committee last, please. First, we have Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Kasnovich.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, everyone. Mark, are we actually opening up these sections for review, or? I think everyone here in attendance has a hard copy, and a way they could follow through. I'm just going to refer you to Section 6. Chapter 6 addresses the financial affairs and the general bylaws for the Town of Auburn. I can speak for the prior sections as well, that all amendments have been made to be consistent and conform with the charter change that was adopted in 2009. Under 6.02, well, before I get into that, I'm also going to say that any bylaw that is addressed through any mass general law has been removed to eliminate the redundancy of language if it is, in fact, enforced under MGL. Under 6.02, I'm just going to address some of the changes made under the financial affairs bylaws. Under mileage, we are recommending and proposing that the rate be set by the chief financial officer annually. Under the existing general bylaws, it requires a joint meeting of both the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen annually to set that rate. It is quite common to be set by the chief financial officer in many communities, consistent with that of the rate that is issued by the Internal Revenue Service on an annual basis. If we jump to Section 7.02, under the capital improvement program, there is a change in the definition of capital project. Currently, the town allows any borrowings for a value of $5,000 or more with a life expectancy of greater than three years. We are changing that to a minimum of 10. We are doing that to address our debt ratio, which seems to be increasing over the years. We should be able to handle smaller capital purchases through the operational side of the budget. If passed and amended, the capital projects that are currently identified through FY20 will remain as is. Those will not be amended. There are some that have been approved for $5,000. This would take effect 2021. So there is a grandfathering effect because we currently do have a five-year plan in place. We also are proposing in 7.03, the capital budgeting process, some revisions to the language that currently exists. And in the revised general bylaws dated December 15th, there appears to be a conflict with the language in the charter. As a result, we are proposing that 7.03, Section 1, the Language Board of Selectmen be removed from item number 1. We are also recommending to be consistent with the charter that item number 2 be entirely taken out. And as identified in item number 3, we are proposing that the language and the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen be removed as well. And that highlights the changes under the financial affairs, so, Mark, I'll turn it back over to you for the...
Does anyone have any questions with our CFO? Ellen, do you have?
Good evening, Ellen Gabry, Town Clerk. I have one small section, 8.01, and it outlines some, you know, major duties of my office. There are references throughout the bylaws, like 3.05, swimming in of committees, but the location of these kinds of things are much better located where they are. So instead of being all over the bylaws and no consistency whatsoever, it is much better for my office, anyway, in dealing with that and this. I appreciate the fee schedule because right now, in order to change any fee that I charge, I have to go to town meeting. So the whole fee schedule will work much better for my department. And I think that's the only thing that I have. It's consistent with mass general law. Some of it was outdated in the current bylaws, and it hadn't been changed. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. Does anyone have any questions for her? There being none? Thank you very much. We'll hear from the Department of Development Inspection Services Acting Director, Darlene
Thank you, Mark. Darlene Coyle, Acting Director of Inspection Services. So the Inspection Services Department, we have a few references. Come closer. Okay, thank you. A few references in the new bylaw. First of all, it establishes the authority for Department of Inspection Services. Prior to the reorganization, the department had several different, separate departments: Board of Health, Animal Control, Building, Zoning, Planning, Conservation Commission. Those are now established under one department for inspectional services, which is operationally much better. And I can say personally, it's a lot easier to have that cooperation to work together because often, one issue that comes before one department involves many of us. So that is a much better setup for us. The building commissioner has been changed for appointment by the Board of Selectmen and now under the town manager. And so that is something that's appointed by Ms. Jacobson. And there's a reference under building in the same venue for adoption of the Stretch Energy Code. It is something that we are currently following, and the building department has reviewed all applications that come before us to make sure it's in compliance with Stretch Energy Code requirements. Probably the biggest change from the old bylaw to the new bylaw that involves our department is under the animal control laws. And previously, in the old bylaw, we had an area for section, I'm sorry, Chapter 6, Section 4 for dog restraint. There were references in there for what it meant to have control of the animals, how dog owners or caretakers determined excessive barking, picking up after your animal, and those types of hot-button issues. In the new bylaw, there was a number of different subsections that were created. We have, I'm sorry, canine care, which identifies many definitions for the requirements for taking care of your dog. We have a section for animal care, general licensing requirements for rabies and quarantine issues. And then we have a section for kennel operation. And within each of those sections, we have many different, I guess, procedures identified that help us to determine how to handle complaints and concerns that come from residents. So that, I think, would be the main, the main changes that would involve our department, and be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Mark.
Sure, yep. Right now.
Okay, good. Mark, 403, Town Meeting. On the dog park, is there a fine on that?
Yes, so...
What is that, please?
Mark, the fine currently is, the fine and the fees are going to be reviewed, and hopefully we have a chance to have our advisement brought to the selectmen. I think currently, right now, the barking dog is a $25 fee, but that may change going forward. One of the important changes in the bylaw from the old to the new, the old barking violation was 30 minutes. It's actually been revised to five minutes.
That's good.
So if there was a dog barking for five minutes or more, that would actually be considered a violation.
Okay, how about the other, like, people not picking up after their dogs? Are those fees going to go up, too?
So those, again, the fee has not been determined at this point. I think currently it's $50.
Was it 50?
Yep, currently it's $50, you are correct. And then going forward, that fee was going to remain. That's something that, you know, again, we would give our advisement to the Board of Selectmen and we would make the final determination. I do have to just also offer, that particular complaint or concern is very difficult to enforce because often, people will see maybe somebody else walking their dog at the park or down the road, and if they don't know the person, if it's not somebody in your neighborhood and you, you know, you know the dog, if it's just a random person at the park, at the campus, or Lamansky, if they don't know who it is, and unless we can, they're there when we get to the, I'm sorry, when we're there to get... Sorry. Unless we view the violation, basically is what I'm trying to say, it's very difficult to enforce. So...
Do you think, do you think there'd be a dog park someplace, like on the campus complex?
If I may, the dog park proposal, while I think it's something that is a very positive thing for the town, it's not something that we've reviewed for these particular bylaws. I think it's something that the town... I think it's something that the town has looked at possibilities and, you know, that might be something that's determined going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome, Darlene.
We'll hear from the Department of Public Works and Stormwater Management, DPW Director, William Coyle.
Thank you, Mark. Bill Coyle, DPW Director. In regards to the changes to the bylaws relative to the Department of Public Works, the majority of the changes were made relative to the reorganization plan, removing the highway surveyor and changing it to the Department of...the Director of Public Works, rather. There have been some changes that we've made, more for clarification. There's been confusion over the years relative to, you know, people who want to install fences and objects within our right-of-way. We have irrigation systems and quite often, while we're plowing roadways, we can damage these items. So there has been a bylaw that's been created that only allows objects to be placed within the right-of-way with the Director of Public Works' approval. Any objects that are placed within the right-of-way without approval would be at the owner's risk. So if we do damage an irrigation line and it was placed within the right-of-way without permission, we would not be responsible for repairing that line. Also, similarly, fences that are installed within the right-of-way without permission and are damaged would, again, would be at the owner's responsibility to repair. That would be moving forward. Items that are currently in place, I think, would be looked at differently, although they also had not been granted approval. Mailboxes, we have added clarification relative to mailboxes. Oftentimes, while we're doing plowing operations, we can damage a mailbox and we're trying to clarify that if the mailbox is damaged by a winrow of snow, it's not actually hit by a plow, the town is not liable for that. That's consistent with other communities within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. If our plow operator hits the item, then we would be responsible. We've also added a five-year moratorium for excavating roadways. When we pave the street or reconstruct the roadway, quite often contractors will come to the office looking for permits and if we recently paved the roadway, I would deny the permit and say that in five years, come back. But if they have to prove to me that it's emergency, currently, I cannot enforce that. I have worked with property owners and they have had some cooperation, but if push came to shove, I don't know if I could legally stop somebody. This bylaw would allow us to say, if we reconstruct or pave the roadway, we cannot dig the roadway, excavate the roadway without permission by the DPW Director, and that would be based on emergencies only. In addition, we've also added another bylaw to prohibit another item that's created quite a problem for us. People will discharge...residents will discharge their sump pumps into the roadway. In this time of year, we've had several locations where that's created a significant icing problem. And it's happened repeatedly in different areas and I technically don't have any enforcing authority to stop that or prohibit that, only to go there currently, encourage them to make that change. So by having this bylaw, that would prohibit anybody discharging water, snow, ice. And these are all under Section 13, by the way. That would prohibit them from discharging any water that would potentially freeze and create a hazard. The other bylaw that was amended was also for the allowance or continuation of the maintenance of private streets for the sum of $5 per linear foot. There's language in the bylaw that allows that to continue. Any new private roads moving forward, I believe, would require a two-thirds vote by the selectmen. So it clarifies also that process as well. And then relative to the stormwater section, chapter 14, that particular section, as mentioned previously, has not changed. I think the only references that have changed under the stormwater management bylaw is relative to previously was mentioned, I believe, of the land use enforcement officer, which no longer exists, and that would be the town engineer or designee. Again, that was relative to the reorganization plan as well. So we're happy to answer any questions that anyone may have at this time.
Questions, comments, concerns?
No? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
You have to go. I'm coming. I'm coming. Mark Knoll, 4 Field Street. What about gas trucks sticking up in the sidewalk and stuff like that?
That wouldn't be a bylaw. We would currently...if that situation did exist, it would be reported to the DPW and we would contact the gas company directly to address that situation.
All right, I'll keep calling you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I have another...I have a police department going to speak. Is there a bylaw for the police?
Yes, you have to come up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Let me know what's not again, too, please, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Hear from the police chief, Chief Andrew Lucas. Mark, of his wish.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. First, I'm pleased to tell you that many changes to the town's charter and the reorganization to the town's municipal departments have had a positive impact on the function and operations of the police department. It has actually made the civil service process more streamlined and effective. It has also created a team-oriented approach and enhanced communication between respective municipal departments, department heads and their staff to be collaborative, more creative, and find effective and practical solutions to problems. Historically, the current bylaws have exasperated every prior police chief and every supervisor that has worked at the Auburn Police Department for as long as I can remember. From my perspective as police chief, the current bylaws are a roadblock to those processes as they are archaic, disorganized, and do not reflect many of the town's operational and administrative changes. I will offer you the following example. The dog officer, now the animal control officer or ACO, is no longer under the control or direction of the police department. The Board of Health is the controlling department and the police act in a supportive role. Pet-related issues are often emotionally charged and finding a solution can be complex. Private attorneys can become involved and they always seem to point to our bylaws and the deficiencies that exist within our bylaws to defend the clients that they represent. A comprehensive bylaw has long been needed to protect the town and serve as general guidelines for how to handle the many complaints continue to upset our residents regarding regulation, care, control, and the treatment of animals. There was an important attachment with our current bylaws called Traffic Rules and Regulations. Within that document is a comprehensive section that mirrors and enhances Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, as well as the Code of Massachusetts Regulation, that govern driving and parking violations here in the town of Auburn. It is clear that this bylaw was intended to serve as an alternative enforcement option to be utilized on the town's secondary roadways. No fines, however, were ever assigned to those violations, essentially rendering them unusable. The bylaws in their current state have not kept pace with social and legal changes. I am proposing a bylaw under the section titled Licensing to enhance the query and fingerprint-based criminal records checks that regulate many of the license holders and employees of those licenses. One of the more frustrating situations for me as police chief is the licensing and regulation of solicitors or door-to-door salespeople. They can be very aggressive and pushy, particularly with our more vulnerable populations, like our senior citizens, who sometimes have a hard time saying no and can be easily bullied from time to time. I have received many complaints that our residents do not want solicitors at their door. However, my hands have been tied. The courts have determined that these salespeople have a right to ply their trade at your front door unless there is a local bylaw to more closely regulate their conduct. Contrary to all common sense, I have only been allowed to conduct a local records check within the state of Massachusetts. Most of these salespeople are from out of state. They are not local people and our society is extremely mobile today. Many of these salespeople have historically had warrants in serious violations and felony convictions in other states that I am unable to access. These bylaws change that. It will allow us to charge a fee for processing them through our inkless electronic fingerprint system through the criminal records database here in Massachusetts as well as the national database that is currently in existence. This will...I reveal their true criminal history and will even potentially capture people that come in and submit an application using a false name. This also will allow us to make a determination with keeping residents' safety at the forefront of this endeavor. The Board of Selectmen is the licensing authority for licenses for vendors and contractors licensed by the town. The police in our supportive role of the Board of Selectmen will be able to use the same system to check those applicants and their employees' criminal histories, thereby allowing the board to make better determinations for the safety of our residents. You can easily imagine the liability to the town should a sex offender or violent convict be issued a town license. Essentially, we become the nexus for providing a predator access to unsuspecting prey by allowing them to sell things from door to door. They also have the opportunity to enter people's homes. They operate ice cream trucks. They drive people around in taxi cabs and tow trucks. Our residents who use these services, particularly children and people that find themselves in difficult circumstances, such as travelers who are broken down or perhaps intoxicated, they're counting on us, the licensing authority, to screen license holders carefully and not subject them to unnecessary and preventable harm. Further, under the new bylaw, Auburn residents will no longer have to tolerate door-to-door sales if they don't want to. If a resident posts a small sign at the door which states "No Solicitors" and the salespeople violate that notice or are pushy, rude, or aggressive, and our residents report it to me, I can take administrative action up to and including revoking the person's permit or the entire company's permit for that matter. Along the same lines, I am proposing to regulate through bylaw where Level 2 and Level 3 sex offenders can reside within the town. On January 21st of 2015, there was an article reported in the Telegram Gazette that was entitled Webster Called A Magnet For Sex Offenders, and the Board of Selectmen out there were clamoring for a new bylaw. As neighboring communities begin to restrict where sex offenders live through a bylaw, I do not want Auburn to be unprotected. Moving forward, Level 2 and Level 3 offenders will no longer be able to establish a residency within 1,500 feet of any school, daycare center, park, playground, elderly housing facility, or place of worship. I'm also proposing a graffiti abatement bylaw. Graffiti is vandalism and is a significant public nuisance that contributes to a decrease in property value and overall quality of life. By contrast, well-kept public and private properties promote improved public safety, livability, and community pride. This bylaw outlines who is responsible to remove tagging or graffiti. Currently, we have very little tagging here in Auburn, however, it's my intention to try and keep it that way. While I'm acutely aware of the social and legal challenges regarding the acceptance of medical marijuana, I included a section on public consumption of marijuana similar to the public prohibition on the consumption of alcohol. This section proposed...I'm sorry, this section, which is proposed by the fire chief regarding enhancement of radio systems, is consistent with state law. However, it allows Auburn to have its own regulations enhancing public safety communications for the future, and I fully support the fire chief and his recommendation for that. The fee schedule is unique and a practical solution to an age-old problem as time passes. The need for regular adjustments of fees and fines as they relate to these bylaws is critically important, and this is an effective solution that the committee has brought forward. I believe these bylaws are a model in the way that they've been written and presented by the committee. It's my belief these bylaws will improve our residents' quality of life and enhance their safety and personal privacy. And it will finally allow public safety, the driving regulations that were created long ago but remained unavailable to us through the new bylaws and the enhancement of the fine structure. These bylaws will allow the police department to use existing technology to make sure criminals do not get an approved license as well. Finally, a bylaw section dedicated to the police will allow our department to make future adjustments as society, technology, and the law changes to ensure that the bylaws stay current, effective, and represent the best practices. Thank you, and I'll be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, good, thank you. Mark Knoll, Town Meeting Member. What about vehicles that are parked on the sidewalk? I'd like to see at least a $50 fine the first time and keep adding $50 if it's at the same location. There are a lot of walkers out there.
What we're going to do is we're going to take a look through the committee at the fee structure. We're going to make through the committee a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen will ultimately be the determining authority as to what the fine structures are going to be. I know we're looking at raising handicap parking violations and the last time that the fees were increased was probably about 10 years ago, so I would assume that that along with pretty much all the others will be increasing.
Do you know what the handicap parking is now?
It's $100. I believe we're going to be recommending that it goes up to somewhere between $200 and $300, which is the maximum allowable. $300 is the maximum.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, chief. Next, we have Fire Chief Steve Cullen.
Thank you. Good evening. After review of the Fire Rescue Department bylaws, it was determined that there were some that were able to be completely eliminated as they are now covered under either the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code or the Mass State Building Code. Of the seven bylaws that we will be putting forward to the town meeting, four of them are existing bylaws and three are new. As I give the overview of each of those bylaws, I will let you know what is currently in place and what is new. 16.01 False Alarms for Police and Fire, that is an existing bylaw. The purpose of this bylaw is to reduce the number of false alarms and to promote the responsible use of alarm devices in the town. The bylaw will cover registration procedures as well as the false alarm fees and the appeal process. 16.02 Display of Street Address Number on Buildings is an existing bylaw. This bylaw addresses the specific requirements of the town as per Mass General Law, Chapter 148, Section 59, which requires numbers on buildings. But the local bylaw discusses the specific locations on where those numbers shall be placed on the building as well as the size, font, contrasting colors, et cetera. 16.03 Rapid Entry System Key Lock Box on Certain Commercial Buildings is an existing bylaw. This bylaw requires the placement of a NOX key lock box on the exterior of any commercial building that has a fire alarm, fire protection system, or a medical alarm system which transmits an alarm off premises. The details of that bylaw cover the installation, locations on the building, as well as the process for notification to us for changing of keys. 16.04 Adequate Public Safety, which would include police and fire, radio coverage in buildings or structures. This is a new bylaw that is being proposed, and this bylaw addresses the specific requirements of the town as per the State Building Code 780 CMR, which now requires adequate radio coverage in buildings. This bylaw speaks to the types of buildings... This bylaw speaks to the types of buildings that is required, and it addresses the minimal signals level and strength, the types of cable and antenna systems required, the public safety frequencies that would be inputted into those systems, as well as what the owner's responsibility for maintenance of the system would be. 16.05 Carbon Dioxide Permitting and Detection, this is a new bylaw that has been proposed. This bylaw would require the review and permitting with the installation of a liquefied carbon dioxide system within a building. This will ensure that the proper detection and notification systems are in place to protect the occupants of the building. The bylaw would specifically recover, would specifically talk about the types of systems that would require a permit as well as the pre-alarm and the alarm thresholds for those CO2 systems. 16.06 The General Hazardous Materials Bylaw, this is an existing bylaw. Although this bylaw was adopted by the town originally under home rule powers to protect the public health and welfare of the residents and business owners, its purpose is to protect, preserve, and maintain the existing and potential groundwater supply, groundwater recharge areas, and surface water from contamination from hazardous materials. In the current bylaw, it is a standalone bylaw that does not make the enforcement authority clear. This bylaw has been moved under the Fire Rescue section, and the enforcement authority is now shared between us and the Department of Inspection Services. The General Hazardous Materials Bylaw defines hazardous materials. It discusses the storage of flammable fluids, the registration requirements, and it discusses above and below ground storage requirements. Lastly, 16.07 Cisterns and Dry Hydrants, this is a new bylaw that is being proposed. In an effort to follow Mass General Law, Chapter 148, Section 28, which is to provide adequate safety requirements for the protection of the public in the event of a fire in or about any building, structure, or other premises, this bylaw would require the installation of a fire protection dry hydrant or underground cistern in any subdivision of eight or more lots, business enterprise parks, and general industry developments where there is insufficient public and/or private water supply to meet the minimum fire flow required by NFPA 1141. The bylaw would discuss the location and construction of said cisterns, the signage and inspections, as well as the surety. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Fire Chief? Okay, that concludes the presentation from the department heads. Does anyone have any questions of the committee about this process? Go ahead, Mark. Take your time.
I had a question that didn't really go to the department, so... Mark, four Fiel Street.
You're fine.
Okay, good. Mark, Towne Mead, remember? What about vehicles parked close to a driveway? I'd like to see at least a 20-foot before the driveway, 20 feet after the driveway, and also across from the driveway, the same, 20 feet before, 20 feet after.
Ken, do you have an answer for that relative to the traffic regulations?
And who does it force, sir? Police?
Yes, but the problem has been that because it's in the traffic rules and regulations, no fines were ever designated for those violations, so the law has no teeth for us.
Maybe a $20 fine? I'm just guessing, yes.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, or even more, I don't know, I just, I don't know what it would be.
The, the bylaw committee's going to be reviewing all the fees and fines and will, will certainly take any recommendations you'd like to make.
Maybe you could, maybe you could add some, so it's a first-time $20, you keep an eye until they learn that the fox is close to people's driveways.
I understand.
Okay. And another thing, too, when you have the whole document all done, the town E members, anyone else, too, can you print to a CD?
Sure. Yes.
Send it to the town E members that way, too. It seems like it's going to be a big book. It's like the town...
Well, that's, that's why we had the presentation tonight that was online, that broke it down, but certainly it can be in PDF format, we can do it in CDs, whatever, whatever residents need.
I'd like, I'd like the CD myself.
Okay.
Okay, the easier. Okay, thank you. Bye.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Does anybody have any more questions? All right, very good. We can conclude this hearing. Second. Hearing's concluded. Thank you all very much for coming. Thank you to all the department heads for their hard work and participation.